Meet caller all that have a question, please call the row.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Perkins, Agusti.
Yeah.
Councilman Queston.
Here.
Councilman Grover.
Here.
Councilman Torres.
Fourteen was here.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Yeah.
Councilman Sodano.
Here.
Councilman Maza. President.
Yeah. My member, President, now the clerk. This is a regular conference of the city council as incorporated in the anti-meeting notice of 2013, which was filed in the city clerk's office, posted on the board of board on December 27th, 2012, and sent to the Starlet. Home new tribute, it confines with the provision of the open public legal law of New Jersey. Public speaking, any resident or taxpayer, like the best city council, any matter, please step forward, take your name and address for the record.
From the city, I got a few poison pen letters. You evil bastard, seems the only way to stop you since you can't control yourself is to put you behind bars. You were a menace in society unless you want to be wearing an orange jumpsuit, you better lay off those faces. There should be cats around, they should be stayed. There was, uh, at least, that's what I look at, they, uh, they're, uh, they're strays. They should be stayed.
Too many cats?
Yeah, they should be stayed, there's too many.
Okay.
Uh, it, uh, there's more permanent when they feed them. Last week, there was a female at this city council, she was complaining about being cool or something, and maybe someone called her a negro or something, and she drove away in a Cadillac.
Okay. Any resident or taxpayer, like the best city council, any matter, does he or none close a question?
All right, I just want to remind you that the Assistant Business Administrator has sent you a little note regarding the convention, just to double check and make sure the dates that are checked are correct.
Where is that then?
It's in the back.
It's way in the back, it's a memo.
I know perfect, I don't know about you.
Do you think it's a body, or is it, I don't have to say it.
It's a memo.
Everyone has a stamp.
Those next, I don't think, uh, only feet now, right?
I wanted to know why Manny and Mr. Martin have a star next to them.
I want to look.
They got shrimp.
Good question, why do they have a star?
Why do I have a star next to me?
Yes.
People shoot usually at a day.
Yes, they do.
They say over, they're kind of like over.
No.
What day do you have?
First day, first day.
Then the big one is Thursday.
So I go down, uh, I go down.
All the way in back.
Oh, wait a second, I'm sorry. This is Tuesday night into Wednesday?
Wednesday night.
That Wednesday night into Thursday, Thursday night.
Wednesday.
And then Thursday to Friday, so that means I gotta add.
Is it final?
Tuesday night.
Yeah, she just wants to make sure.
I have to do that. They're only paying for two nights.
Keep going, 24 again.
We're staying at the Caesar's?
I think so. Is that it, right there?
That's the Caesar's, right?
Yeah. No.
Oh, I don't know.
Can we find out?
Okay.
Because it don't say anywhere here.
The issue with this, okay?
Yes.
Just find out and call me tomorrow.
Okay.
Because I need to make a phone call.
Okay. What letter do you mean?
Especially if it's your first time to see a, see.
Just mark.
I don't call the right.
Mark on whether you're going or not.
Not gonna get a room in one place for one night.
Uh, it's the October 11th.
What I usually do is I call, it says Caesar, I call it.
Okay. Let's go. Letter dated September 18, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding contract to Firefighter One LLC, Sparta, New Jersey, for MSA Fire Hall M7 air mask for the fire department. For the period September 17, 2013, through March 31st, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $60,000.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated September 27, 2013, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization from proper city officials to issue a fidelity official's bond covering Paul Lesniak, City Treasurer, Tax Collector, with the Hartford Insurance Company, Hartford, Connecticut, through Agent of Record Use Plumber Associates, Somerville, New Jersey, and an annual premium of $1,750.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated September 27, 2013, from the Business Administrator advising that being satisfied that an emergency did exist, recommends the award of a contract to Big Top Contractors, Avenue, New Jersey, for the immediate demolition of 217 to 19 First Street, Elizabeth, in the amount of $46,800, and that's for information.
Any question?
Where are we?
Letter dated September 30, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Bayer Ford, Marstown, New Jersey, for the purchase of one 2013 Ford Police Interceptor SUV for the Police Department, at a total cost of $27,680.75, under the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council Contract.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated September 30, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding, uh, a contract to Jesco Inc., South Plainfield, New Jersey, for furnished parts and perform repairs on various John Deere Construction, Industrial, and Agricultural Equipment for the Department of Public Works. For the period December 1, 2013, through November 30, 2015, in an amount not to exceed $174,000.
Any question? Yeah, Councilman Masz.
Mr. President, if you look, there were actually three vendors that they listed on the back. Only one vendor replied with a price. In a case like this, wouldn't that be more feasible, or much better, when you have, at least you could compare it to somebody else, maybe in the future, one price, one bid is not sufficient, you want to make sure that you have, you know, at least another person that you could compare, and be able to give it to the lowest bid, or whatever, or maybe probably save more money.
Well, okay, but you get the.
Just for the future, I mean.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Very good.
Letter dated October 1st, 2013, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for proper city officials to participate in the Western States Contracting Alliance National Co-op, and permit the city to utilize the contract award from Western States Contracting Alliance National Co-op to Sprint Spectrum LP, Overland Park, Kansas, the parent company of Sprint Solutions, Inc., for the purchase of wireless phones and services from Sprint Spectrum LP. For the period September 24, 2013, through October 31st, 2016, in an amount not to exceed $40,000.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated October 1st, 2013, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply for, to execute, and to accept any and all grants under the NJEDA $75 million stronger New Jersey Neighborhood and Community Revitalization Program on behalf of the City of Elizabeth.
Any question?
How much are we applying for?
Do we have?
As much as you could grab.
Apply for it, Tony? It says send it.
Well, that's, that's for the whole state. How much are we applying for? We can't be applying for a whole amount. We could.
Did it say? Can we find out, Tony, get back to us if you're not sure? You got it?
No, we'll have it.
I said, yeah.
I know, I can apply all funding opportunities, all funding.
Yeah, I'll check it out. I'll check it out. Put it on your, help me get this.
Thank you.
How much we applying for?
Letter dated October 1st, 2013, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for proper city officials to apply for, to execute, and to accept any and all grants under the World Wildlife Programs 2013 Earth Hour City Challenge Program on behalf of City of Elizabeth, with an opportunity to receive awards in the amount of $30,000.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated October 1st, 2013, from the Business Administrator requesting that your honorable body consider an ordinance to repeal Chapter 2.44 of the Code of City of Elizabeth, entitled Department of Neighborhood Services in its entirety, to amend Chapter 2.28 of the Code of City of Elizabeth, entitled Department of Administration, to amend Chapter 2.36 of the Code of City of Elizabeth, entitled Department of Health and Human Services, to amend Chapter 2.48 of the Code of City of Elizabeth, entitled Department of Planning and Community Development, and to amend Chapter 17.4 of the Code of City of Elizabeth, entitled Land Development Control Ordinance of City of Elizabeth.
Any question? Okay.
Somebody gonna come to us and tell us what they're doing? Well, they're gonna eliminate Neighborhood Services.
That's what it sound like.
Right. But the question then becomes, who's going with?
Who's the, ask by, who's the?
Yeah, that's what's in here.
They're, they're not eliminating Neighborhood Services, so much as splitting up the bureaus and putting them into different departments. So some departments are going into administration, uh, some are going into the Health Department, and I believe, uh, some are going into planning and community development.
Mr. Attorney, I beg to differ, it says repeal Chapter 2.4, entitled Department of Neighborhood Services.
Right.
In its entirety.
Right. Yeah, assigning.
And then we're gonna take all of the depart, all the different subdivisions of that department, we're giving it to the department, so that Neighborhood Services will not exist anymore.
Right.
No.
No, that, yeah, that's, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
All, all of the employees will be there.
No, I understand, just the question is, who's gonna be supervising what sections of Neighborhood Services? That's the question. I guess we're gonna have to read through this whole thing and figure it out.
Mr. President?
Yes.
In line with this, since I'm in on Council meetings, there's, there's a lot of, there is at times confusion on what service is provided from what department. If we're doing this, this is an excellent time to provide as much clarity and direction on the webpage, and flyers, whatever, for the residents, and for, even internally for us, because, um, sometimes even there's duplication going on. Like, sometimes you call one, one office, and they'll say, well, that's, that's a different department, vice versa. Uh, so I, I know this is especially confusing for, for residents, so that would be very, very helpful if we could do that, and Tony, if you could pass that, hold on, please.
Well, if you read a bit more, Councilwoman Ro, you're looking at various and clear, look at it.
I, I got it written, we got it written.
I just read two seconds, it does clear a little bit more.
It tells you.
I cast a mask, I'll talk.
Yeah, Mr. President, I had a chance that I, before, to read this. It's actually explaining every Bureau of Construction, blah, 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 and everything else, but it does not explain the Bureau of Public Information and Citizen Participation Services, and Bureau of Tourism and Culture and Heritage Affairs, under which department, under which area, and to whom they have to report.
You're going to Department of Administration.
Well.
The other B.
If you look at, first one is a Bureau of Centralizing, then there's missed all those other, gonna be a need there. If you look at Bureau of Centralizing, all those newsstand, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, I guess, yeah, this is administrative.
Junkyard, all that, gonna be on that, on that whole.
Yeah.
You understand?
I got it. If you look under Section 4, it tells you Department of Administration, which are the different bureaus, A to G.
It's like, it's have to read. It tells you.
Okay, how about?
Got it.
Letter dated October 3rd, which is an error, 2013, from the Business Administrator requesting.
Yes, an error, it's an error.
It's an error, I said it's an error.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Requesting that your honorable body consider authorizing his honor, the mayor, to execute collective bargaining agreements for local 74 United Service Workers Union, Elizabeth City Yard Workers Union, Council Number 8, New Jersey Civil Service Association, City Hall Supervisors Association, Elizabeth Public Health Nurses Association, Recreation Department Supervisors Association, Recreation Maintenance Workers Association, and City Hall Maintenance Association, for the period July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2017.
Any question?
I just want to thank the administration for finally, you know, getting these union contracts to our table, so that we can move on. It's very difficult for.
Yeah, I'll see you call.
Yeah, thank you.
I just have a question.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, on this, I don't know if there's anything else in particular that we should be concerned about. I see the increases in that, that are being mentioned in the cover letter. There's some other changes apparently, and we need to really look at it, because I remember last time we approved the contract, then later on came before us that the city employees could move out of the city after 15 years, and then we were told we had already approved the contract, so that stipulation had to come with it. So I don't know if there's anything else similar to that that's hidden, that we're not aware of, that we need to know about now, before we approve it. Because I remember that happened the last time to us, and we were told, well, you approved the contract, so you have to approve this now, they can move out after 15 years.
Take a look at it, and if you find something between now and next week, call me, and we'll decide to put it on hold till we get it, can I? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I may ask another question, going back to the Neighborhood Services.
Neighborhood Services.
Are we gonna eliminate that director's title then?
The Neighborhood Service Title? Tony, do you know where that, or not?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. Go for it, sure.
Right, but I mean, that, I guess we would have to change table of organization of the city, and remove that position.
Did they move it, Tony?
Yeah.
If I know.
Assuming that's the next step.
Okay.
Unless it's.
I don't, I didn't see that, that Council. Okay. So we read over the last one about the union contract, if you guys find something that's here that you'd like, please let me know.
I just prefer that maybe, our BA would have been here to.
That's all, that's all.
Speak more on it.
I said, we read, all right, good, just keep going, we're like, we're gonna say.
Okay. Letter dated September 23rd, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the City Treasurer to cancel taxes set forth in the attack schedule, and be credited to the block grant holding account in the sum of $15,531.58.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated September 30, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization for the tax collector to cancel the disallowed senior citizen deduction from Mildred Fleming, Lafayette Street, in the amount of $250 for tax year 2012.
Any question?
Letter dated October 1st, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that temporary emergency appropriations for the 2014 State Fiscal Year Municipal and Sewer Utility Budgets may be necessary.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated September 23rd, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute and sign agreements with the following nonprofit agencies as listed on Schedule A, attached here to, to provide community development block grant funding for the period July 1st, 2013, to June 30, 2014, in total amount of $2,076,492.
Any question?
Just so everybody knows, going back to any Councilwoman Perkins being one of the old ones here, when we first started on Council, community development block grant money was like $10,000. Two.
Shot.
Okay, it's one, two, five, both sides.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Letter dated September 23rd, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for proper city officials to execute and sign agreements with the nonprofit agencies as listed on Schedule A, attached here to, to provide emergency solutions grant funding, fiscal year 2013, in the total amount of $136,074.
Question? Go ahead.
Letter dated September 26, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting that your honorable body consider approving an urban enterprise zone proposal utilizing zone assistance funds to fund the Customer Service Skills Training Initiative Program, the E6, to be administered through the Retail Skills Center, located at the Outlet Collection Jersey Gardens, in the amount of $75,131.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated September 20, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A, attached here to, for the replacement of sidewalk, in the amount of $1,233.43.
Any question?
I'd just like to thank the, I'd like to thank Public Works for taking care of this, and Council President, shining some light. So we were able to get this sidewalk taken care of, that was solely due. Thank you, so.
Go ahead.
Letter dated September 26, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting to extend the resolution dated July 26, 2011, with Oakmont Hayward One LLC, to construct a 2,000 linear foot storm sewer along Fairmount Avenue by October 14, 2013, specifically to extend the developer's agreement to July 1, 2014.
Any question?
Who's paying for it? Now, they agreed to construct it. All right, so they're gonna be.
They're doing it.
They're doing it?
Yeah, I think they're doing it.
Okay. The office of the Copanke agreed to construct it, but they're doing it.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Letter dated September 17, 2013, from Police Director, requesting to establish a no parking, signed from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. school days on Park Avenue.
Any question?
Mr. President?
Yeah, Councilman Keenan.
I want to commend Lieutenant Marcus, since he started over there, I find him to be an excellent partner to work with on projects, and he's doing a great job, he's a very much a person.
Okay. Go ahead.
Letter dated September 19, 2013, from the Police Director, requesting authorization for proper city officials to accept and sign a sub-grant award from the New Jersey State Police Office of Emergency Management, State Homeland Security Grant Program Sub-Grant, for the purpose of enhancing the operation of Elizabeth's Office of Emergency Management.
Any question? Go ahead.
Okay, email dated September 23, 2013, from Mr. Jeffrey Howard, requesting to renew his appointment as Constable in City of Elizabeth for his three-year period.
Okay.
Who's that?
I'm sorry.
You've already, the Council?
Yeah, currently.
Fourth floor.
That's fourth floor, right?
Council, yeah.
He just said, thank you.
Yeah, for the renewal.
For the renewal.
For renewal, right?
Thank you.
No, it's for renewal.
He asked it for renewal.
Yeah, he was saying, it was pretty nice one.
It's combination. It starts off as a sand, it's a vast. In faith, he asked.
Okay. Okay, letter dated September 25, 2013, from Mr. Rodney White, requesting to renew his appointment as Constable in City of Elizabeth for three-year period.
Okay. Go ahead.
His honor, the mayor, is requesting a commendation for Ms. Bernadette Countryman, Senior Vice President, Clinical Operations, and Chief Nursing Officer, Trinitas Health and Regional Medical Center, on her retirement. That's okay?
I'm tired.
Go ahead.
Councilman Maza is submitting two memorials, Edmund A. Palmieri, Senior, and Vincenzo Nusso.
Antonio Garuto.
Antonio who?
G.A.R.U.U.T.O.
I can't hear you.
G.A.R.R.U.U.T.O.
Okay.
She did both. She did both, yes, she did.
It's in the world.
Yeah, I remember.
Okay. Memo dated September 20, 2013, from the Rent Control Fair Rental Housing Board Minutes of July 17, 2013, is in your package. You also have a response from our attorney regarding personalized handicap.
I've got a question on that. Did we ever figure out what was the cost? Yeah, what was the cost?
Excuse me, I don't have that answer yet.
No. You didn't do that yet.
Okay. You'll get that, Council, right there. Administrative cost, you're talking about, Council, right?
Yeah, because we had discussed on how it's costing the city.
Like $640.
So the question was, can we include into the administrative cost fee the city clerks over there? That was the question.
The question was the administrative cost of putting it.
Are you still with that? Okay, right, we'll get that.
Okay, Mr. President, can I take excuse?
Uh, yes.
Mr. President. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
No, I gotta go pack.
Went around.
Went around, I'm gonna get the brief. I need from, as you're gonna be passing orders a while back, with the tourism package, and that, you need to identify a council, name a council person to that board, and also a local business person to the board, from us. We need to name someone that, and I spoke to Gordon Hoss, it was the afternoon earlier, and he indicated that most likely, most of the meeting would be held, probably during the day, so those that are interested, you know, just be reminded, mind of that, that most of the hours will be, the meeting will be during the day. I know Councilman Zari was very instrumental in working on that during the time that we was wrestling with that, and so, I would love to see if we can name someone between now and the 21st, so we have a week or two, we can get that to me, so when we can prepare, and turn that over to, to him. And a local business person, at that time, I know we met, mentioned, Mel Mel, and since then, I have another person, Marcy Metz, she's a local lady here, in the city. Now, I think it's only called, only called, called one person, but if we just so desired to amend that, or just to make it two, even if we didn't name a woman in it, in the, in a male, it would only count like one vote. So just keep that in mind, but right now, it's only for one, one person for the local business person. Yeah, Councilman?
Marcy Metz was, was the president of the Generalism Chamber of Commerce. If she stole us, I don't know if that would represent.
No, she's not, she's not, not now.
Okay.
But she's a very.
She's right, she wanted to be a good person, and.
Absolutely. Yeah, Councilman Maza.
I, I think I recommend that Patricia Perkins, when she's retired, she could be a very valid asset.
I'm not retired.
Who's that?
Your colleague, I'm offended, Patricia, you say she's somebody that is not occupied in the daytime, because most of the meeting was being in daytime.
You don't know what I do in my daytime.
I'm sorry, Joey, what about you, you retired, right now?
Well, anyway, we need to come up with someone.
What about you, Mr. President, you retired.
Well, let me say to you, I, I would have, I have conflict in front of during the time, during the day, because I, you realize my schedule really is heavy during the day, and I'm heavily involved, being with my church during the day, more than you realize, and then other entities during the day, so it really would have a conflict. I don't know how I would feel, partly sometimes, but not all the time. I don't know if we would have, but.
Councilman Zari's.
I know Councilman, I had a conversation with Councilman, thanks, all this, I don't know if their schedule would allow it, he and I had a discussion about it, I know he would be a good candidate for it, because he did, he did, he did a great job in working with the other, with Gordon, alone with myself, put this together, and I know we had to, it's a lot of users, and did quite a good job on, but I guess I don't know how to schedule this.
It depends on what the president, depending on the schedule, kind of difficult, it depends on how many meetings, how many fires, what time of day, that sort of thing, so.
Oh, we might be working on it.
But I would be interested.
Though that interest, I, I said, between now and next, I guess, the 21st day, about cities may have to search and then change, and President, they will, and also along with the, with the same thing with the, with the, it's only called for one person, but, I guess, in the orders, but I guess, we could amend it and have two, male and female, and, but they, they was only count for one vote.
And also, in that respect, Mr. President, when we were working on the tourism ordinance, at that time, we spoke about Mel Mel, but if we can make that, to have two business representatives. representatives on it, that would be great.
Yeah, but that's what I suggest here, is we can, if we have the authority to amend that, if we want to. Just, you know, throwing that idea back here, okay? Once around, Councilman?
Let people know, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I have teamed up with the Von McCullough Foundation, we're gonna have an event on Friday at, excuse me, gentlemen, at Dolce's, $25 to help support breast cancer awareness and prevention. I hope you gentlemen can come out.
Count to $25?
$25 to support, and if you can't come, did you have? If you have.
Oh, yes, it's Friday.
Yeah, Friday.
How can you just get to us?
This is Friday. Okay.
Can you pay the door?
Yeah, you can pay the door.
My name that I have to celebrate.
For having dancer?
Yes.
Can you boogie that?
My sister's season.
It's over.
Orange, my name that I have to celebrate. October 4.
That's all I have.
Counselman Torres?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of issues. Is it birds in the house? It's not just in the first ward, I have to talk into Lieutenant Marcus, the parking, the double parking by the schools in the morning and in the afternoon. There's a big problem in the first ward, parents getting into fights with teachers, with the principals. I was wondering, is there anything that we could do where we send patrol cars? I know it's almost impossible to set up to each and every school, but just some type of system where we could just help the principals and the faculty at the schools, because I witnessed it for myself, School 13, they double park on both sides. I mean, there's no structure there. So, I think if we had some type of police presence, maybe we could make some money for the city and put some order into place. Second thing is during Hurricane.
Sandy.
Sandy, there was a tree that fell at 527 East Jersey Street, fell on a car, started a fire. I passed there today, the sidewalk is still in maintenance.
527 what?
East Jersey.
East Jersey.
Have wooden horses and the building is occupied, so it's not like it's an abandoned. Can we sign that landlord?
Yes, I'm too surprised it hadn't been done.
Yeah, it was just, again, it's very damaged for the residents. 440 East Jersey Street also.
Same thing?
No. They have half of a roof. I was actually walking down Campaign and, and I noticed that half of the roof on 440 East Jersey Street is missing, so I don't know, maybe we can inspect it on there to maybe deem it unsafe or correct. And I got a couple, I'd just like to congratulate our colleague, Mr. Carlos Daniel, for becoming a senior pastor, I don't know if they have him yet, but next July, July coming up, he's actually gonna be senior pastor of Price Fellowship, so I just wanted to congratulate.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And I want to say that I actually attended this weekend, Bless Fest. It was ran by the late Reverend Hamid Rashada, which he passed away two years ago, and his wife, who is our health director, Chris McGarrett, was able to provide health care for 380 residents in the City of Elizabeth, which I just wanted to say, which was a great event and I'm very proud to have participated.
That's it, thank you. Counselman Keane?
Yes.
Counselman Mazza?
Yeah, Mr. President, one of our priests from St. Anthony Church, Father Sesto, S.E.S.E.O. is retiring, actually.
Seska?
Seska, yeah. I will give the information to Yolanda.
Okay.
I want to have a commendation for the service to our community, and I know we have a small party in the rectory on this coming Friday, he's going to be retired in Ramsey, New Jersey as a, you know, as a priest. So, Father Sesto being the Italian pastor for the Italian-American community, because of them, not having any of the Italian priests in the area, so the Italian mess is down from St. Anthony Church. So, after 92 years of having an Italian mess, St. Anthony built by Italian immigrants, sweat and blood of immigrants, we go into a new era, welcome new people in the area, of course, and bring them close to God. So, Father Sesto happened to be a very fine priest, Salishian priest, I think he did attend One Blessing for the Uton City Government Day a few years ago. And so, we used to have five priests in our church, we've done to actually one priest, Tony. So, when you go to confession, you gotta, can't choose anymore.
Can't continue.
That's it, it's not easy, Tony.
Attraction, Tony, I mean.
That's it. That's it, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Council. Councilman Presby?
Yes, I would say, President, very briefly, I got a couple of calls from residents, and I assure that I will bring it up to your attention and I will speak to Councilman Gonzalez, because it's a matter about the animal shelter.
Mm-hmm.
So, the resident was very concerned. I know that, well, I don't want to speak to somebody who's not here, but I know that other individuals in City Hall are concerned as well. So, I decided to visit the place late this afternoon. And let me tell you, that's why I was asking Tony earlier about the budget, and I didn't want to discuss it before, but the place is deplorable. It's really a shame how terrible the conditions are there, not only for the animals that we house in the place, but for the individuals that work there. So, I'm concerned for the safety of the animals, as well as the safety of our employees. And something needs to be done. I don't know whether, I would like to know if there's an item in the budget, talking about capital improvement, to address that particular issue. I was, I tried to contact the director today, I was unable to speak to her, she was not, you know, I'm just not able to talk to her today. I'm gonna reach out to her again, but something needs to be done, because I'm convinced that if anyone from the outside comes to visit, inspect, we're gonna fail. So, I'm concerned for the safety, for the animals and the individuals, and I don't want our city to be embarrassed. Right now, the conditions are deplorable.
It's been a serious consideration by the Director of Health, and there's some funds in the donated account.
Okay.
From a, from a, within the past couple of years, so something seriously looking at has been discussed, and hopefully something.
I'm glad to hear that, and I just want to say, whatever is gonna be done, it should be done.
Immediately.
Immediately. I will consider it like an emergency.
That's the first thing the Health Director put at the top of her, and it went out for a grant.
Yeah, right.
Back in February. I don't know where that grant process is, but it came before, it was a million dollar grant from Petco, and I don't know what happened to them.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And I spoke to her about it, that was one of the first things she, she, yeah, but she, the whole thing has to be.
Okay, the whole thing has to be, something needs to be done, that's all I can say.
And she would probably value our support.
Oh, she has my support 100%.
Yeah.
Because I know she, she put it, brought it forward.
It was like begging, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I reached out to her today, when I, when I noticed how.
It was a Petco grant, about $2 million to do the whole.
Exactly, exactly.
Good, I'm glad to hear that, I'm glad to know.
It was a small amount of money that someone bequested.
Forty thousand.
Yeah, but that's not gonna do it. That's not gonna.
No, no.
Okay, so the issue's gonna be addressed.
Yeah, but yeah.
And we was happy that she applied for the grant. I was happy she did.
Yeah, but I'm concerned that we might not get the grant soon. I don't want to wait. This cannot wait years.
Yeah.
This cannot wait too long, Mr. President.
Exactly, I agree.
No, that is, yeah.
Saying, it's really, you have to see results. It's deplorable.
Chance we didn't go down, I say I don't have to go down because I know.
You know, and I know some of those employees, but I really, something needs to happen to help this situation.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you, Mr. President, that's it.
Counselor Sis, any questions?
I just wanted to add too, I haven't had the chance to visit, but I know it's been mentioned, just the fact that all the animals are put to sleep after a certain time period. I just wanted to just even add, of course, that's the emergency situation, but also probably revisit, maybe there's something that could be done to prevent, just because I know like the animals that are brought in, it could be for so many different reasons. If they were hit by a car, they're older, you know, I could understand that, but there could be some animals that could be a blessing to a family that can't afford to purchase a dog or a cat. So, maybe a window of time that the community's aware, you know, something, something, just because it's, you know, it's really sad that, and something that also I believe a lot of residents might not even know, that if their dog is missing, there's possibility it might be there, just because there's not that much of an awareness of it. So, I just, you know, I guess the whole policy behind it after, of course, that's the emergency situation. The other thing I wanted to bring up, I know there's always tension whenever anything from the Board of Ed or with the city is discussed.
Never.
Never. But I just want to bring up, I know the Board of Ed did bring up the possibility of using the city council chambers to have a meeting, and personally, I like the idea of having representatives from the city and the board to meet there to discuss issues. I, I think it's a step towards to try to at least have some dialogue together and work with the community. And from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, anytime any council member has requested, I guess, to use a school for an event, they haven't been rejected. I know Councilman Nelson Gonzalez mentioned just the fact, it's tedious that you have to request every month, and I had expressed I have to do that, the same thing too, but I'm in favor of seeing what we, what we could do to work together, whether it be, you know, in the city council chambers, just because I, I feel in that area, they, you know, in my opinion, they haven't pretty much closed the door on us, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
I just want to talk about the cats and dogs. The speaker who spoke said something about all those stray cats, he said kill them all. Isn't that what he said? The speaker, oh, you weren't.
Oh, no, no, I was here, I was here.
Spade.
The spade.
Oh, spade, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
He said spade.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm more with walking.
Oh, he said spade. Oh, I know what he was saying. But he's on the same page.
That's why I asked.
It's funny though, he does bring up a really good point, there's certain areas in the fourth ward that there's infiltration cats.
Because people feed them.
Like, yeah, exactly.
I see the little.
So, that is, that is an issue. He was right on with that, that is.
You know, he comes from the fourth ward.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I see, I see him walking throughout the whole city.
Yeah, but he just says spade.
Yeah.
Give us some of those cats.
So, that's it, thank you.
Counselman, because I'll do.
Whatever.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Because we've got a curse in the name of something.
Yeah, it's a bunch of cats.
I like the request of traffic study on Merle Street and Vera Avenue.
Where?
Yeah.
And Vera.
Yeah. Got complaints to the residents over there, speeding, and then the kids coming out of school, being able to cross and.
Well, that's an issue, nothing.
But mostly with the kids walking back and forth home and being able to turn at that intersection, people have difficulty just getting through to be able to get across and stuff like that. And I had some requests from some residents, I want to see traffic, I guess, and these, some of these roads are state roads, for instance, Railway Avenue and Mora Avenue, some residents have approached me about maybe having there on one of those streets, or one of the other, or maybe even both, a green turn sign, signal, the green arrow where they can go, make a left.
What about?
Railway and South Almora.
South Almora, okay.
Railway and Almora.
Okay.
There's a lot of times that the traffic gets caught up because somebody misses a turn or whatever, so if you give them the opportunity to make that turn at that left, yeah, that would be helpful.
No space to make a left.
Also, over on South Almora and Edgar Road, the 439 heading west, going towards the Bayway Circle, on Edgar Road particularly, the same thing there, a green turn arrow where you can make a left onto Edgar Road.
Bayway, what?
Over in Bayway, Edgar Road and South Almora Avenue. Being able to make a left there is very difficult.
You bet. That's a state road.
And there was the traffic, and that's a state road, so we need the state, and I'm not sure if traffic would first do, I think they would do a study first and then forward it to the state, depending on what they find, so for those two, we could have that. And something I mentioned before, and if we could have, maybe the Police Director sends something out to police officers, they do a wonderful job with complaints about noise and residences, but the cars, I mean, the other day I was, on Sunday morning, I stopped by the corner store on my way to church to pick up, you know, paper and some stuff. This guy pulls up with his music blaring, with big speakers in the back, goes into the store, leaves the car running with the speaker at nine o'clock in the morning, and it was